Call the February twenty-four, twenty twenty-five meeting order. Please stand for the lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Make a motion to adopt tonight's agenda with one addition. Addition to the consent agenda, item six zero F, Planning Commission resignation.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on? Okay, motion passes.
We have to vote.
Oh, excuse me. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anoka County Sheriff.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. January had a total of three hundred and sixty-eight calls for service. That replicates basically the trend that we've been seeing throughout the county at this time of year with the colder weather. We had four thefts, three assaults, and we responded to twenty-three different traffic crashes of varying severity. Made a total of forty-three arrests for miscellaneous offenses. We completed a hundred and seventy-seven traffic stops, which resulted in twenty-six separate traffic citations. Overall, our dispatch calls were slightly lower than what we've seen in the past. However, our self-initiated field activity was up last month. Couple of our notable calls occurred on New Year's Day, one being at one twelve AM. Deputy Johnson attempted to stop a white passenger car at Highway sixty-five and two twenty-first Avenue Northeast after observing multiple lane violations. He activated his overhead emergency lights and siren, and the vehicle sped up and continued northbound on sixty-five. It ended up proceeding into Isani County. The pursuit continued northbound with the vehicle reaching speeds of eighty-five miles per hour. It eventually turned west into a neighborhood within the city limits of Isani and was blocked by our squads after pulling into a cul-de-sac. Deputy Johnson ordered the driver out and arrested him with the assistance of our partners to the north. The mail driver had a confirmed warrant for a weapons violation out of Hennepin County and was later transported to our jail and booked on the warrant in fleeing police in a motor vehicle. A few minutes later, almost simultaneously on New Year's Day in the early morning hours, Deputy Litzner located a vehicle traveling north in the area of one eighty-first Avenue and Sand Hill Parkway Northeast. The registered owner was shown to have a confirmed warrant out of Sherburne County. Deputy Litzner stopped the vehicle and confirmed that the driver had an active warrant for his arrest. While taking the mail into custody, Deputy Litzner located a loaded H and K pistol on the mail's person concealed in a jacket pocket. The mail's permit to carry was later found to be expired. The mail was transported to jail and booked on the outstanding warrant and firearms violation. On the second of January at nine fifteen PM, deputies were made aware of a male with an active felony-level warrant residing in a residence in the two four three hundred block of Highway sixty-five Northeast. The deputies drove to the address, knocked on the door, and spoke with a female who was asked if the male with the warrant was home. The female said that he was and offered to get this person for the deputies. The female closed the door and refused to come back outside. Several minutes later, the male appeared out of a window and said he had taken care of his warrant. The deputies explained that he had not and that he would need to step outside. The male eventually did step outside, but said he wanted to go back inside and get a jacket. In doing so, the male turned and attempted to flee back into the home. We were able to secure this male in handcuffs and transport him to jail where he was booked on the warrant and for obstructing illegal process. And then finally, on the sixth of January at one thirty in the morning, Deputy Johnson was patrolling near Quick Trip in East Bethel and stopped a vehicle for a traffic violation when it entered onto Highway sixty-five. While speaking with the driver, Deputy Johnson learned that the driver didn't have proof of insurance on his vehicle. As he continued speaking with the driver, Deputy Johnson noted several inconsistencies in his story, and he was able to obtain the legal justification needed for a canine sniff on the external portions of the car. Deputy Johnson requested assistance from a canine unit in the county, which responded to the scene, and a sniff was later conducted on the exterior of the vehicle. At the conclusion of the sniff, Deputy Johnson learned that the dog had alerted to the presence of narcotics, presence of narcotics inside of the vehicle, excuse me. Deputy Johnson later searched the car and located oxycodone pills and a white powdery substance that tested positive for the presence of methamphetamine. Driver was placed under arrest and transported to jail and booked on fifth-degree possession of a controlled substance. So, a little bit slower for calls. Busier month, though, as you could see with some of our self-initiated activity. And as of late last week, we are working, or our marine unit is working with the East Bethel Fire Department to solidify a date in early March to conduct some ice rescue training out on Coon Lake. This training, we usually do on a yearly basis. It's designed to bolster inter-agency cooperation between both our agencies in case we have to make a rescue on one of our bodies of water, so looking forward to that. If you live in the area, please be aware if you see a large presence out there, it's probably us. It's going to be later in March here, so.
Thank you. Any questions for the deputy?
No, but I will make a comment. I'm glad to know that because on the social media sites, people are always asking, "What are the police doing here? What are they doing there?" So, at least we'll be able to have an answer.
With the twenty-three traffic collisions, was that because of the weather mostly, or?
Yeah, and I think sometimes time of day. I think we've had some pretty good weather days, but we've also had some really bad ones, too. And we always see that uptick, you know, when it gets a little bit busier out. But we usually see our accidents in the early morning hours and then later in the evening when the light conditions are not what we're used to. But now that it's getting lighter out earlier, I think we'll see a decrease in that, hopefully if our weather stays consistent.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fire report.
Good afternoon, or evening, Mayor, council members. I have our January fire report. For the month of January, the fire department responded to eighty-five calls for service, responded to sixty-four medicals, three accidents, five alarms, three fires. In those three fires, one was a chicken coop fire, one was, two were grass fires. And then three mutual aid calls. We have responded to a total of a hundred and fifty calls so far for this year compared to a hundred and thirty-eight for last year. Just a reminder, with the melting snowpack, you're going to need to get a burning permit again. And that'll be from the burning hours, I do believe, are five to eight, five PM to eight in the morning. And that, anything, that's burning permit is for anything bigger than a three-by-three by-three fire. And that, and like I said, with the old grass that's dry, that fire can start very easily. Also, with the warmer temps, the lake ice is starting to get, it's going to start getting iffy. The landing right now are going on to Coon Lake, Athelons Landing, that access is very iffy right now. And that, so be careful when you go out on the ice. Make sure, you know, check the ice as you go. On March ninth, daylight savings times will start. It's a good time to check your CO detectors and your smoke detectors for batteries, change your batteries and that. Most of your smoke detectors will be hardwired, but they still have a battery backup. And you need to at least change the batteries once in a while, or once a year. You can have some smoke detectors that have a ten-year sill battery, but it's still a good time to test to make sure they are working. It's also a good time to put your fire exit plan in place and make a safe meeting place for your family. As a fire department, we recommend a tree away from the house or a mailbox. And then with springtime coming to, people, and the price of eggs, people are starting to get chickens. As I had mentioned earlier, we did have a chicken coop fire. They're using heat lamps to keep the chicks warm. And as the chicks all huddle around that heat lamp and that, they tend to knock it over once in a while. And that can cause the bedding to start on fire, which then will spread to the chicken coop and/or if you have them in the house, it will spread to your house. So, make sure that heat lamp is secured and that, so it doesn't tip over easily and that. And to go off Deputy Peters' thing, we do plan on an ice rescue thing. And I do believe it'll be March twenty-fourth. There'll be days and nights. So, we'll have some people out there at nine o'clock in the morning, and we'll have some people out at seven PM on March, I do believe it's March twenty-fourth. And we'll put it on our social media site, just on the East Bethel page, just to let people know that, hey, this is what's going on there.
Can you also send staff and council an email as a reminder?
Yep, we'll send you guys a reminder of it and that. So, but yeah, so like I said, we'll keep it well informed because when we are out there and there's a high presence of us, that's when people get really curious. So, with that, I can take, answer any questions you guys have.
Seeing none? Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to get back to training.
Great. Thanks, Chief. Public forum. Who's on the list there?
Hey, Mr. Softley.
Ms. Gimple.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I had sent an email to City Administrator about a month ago on, it was a complaint, you know. Everything's complaint base is what, what you guys have been saying, so it was a complaint. And I got an email back that I did forward to every one of you and got nothing in return. So, I'm wondering why, how, I guess, how do we work with that? If it's a complaint and it's a legitimate complaint, what do we do after that? Besides coming to you, if, if going to City Administrator or City Staff isn't, doesn't work, what's next besides coming to you?
Mr. Mayor, do you want me to respond? Ms. Gimple, this is regarding the sign issue that you had complained about. Okay. I don't have the response in front of me here. However, the response essentially, as you'll recall, because I copied the council on it as well, was that these people have a right, they have a freedom of speech. It's in their yard. It's not in the right of way. Our ordinance does not cover signs that are not in the right of way. And, and my suggestion to you at that point was to follow up with an attorney to see if you had any sort of basis for, for what they wrote on the sign. I understand the signs are not complimentary to you. And, and trust me, after eighteen years in politics, a lot of, a lot of things aren't complimentary. But I would assume that based on the fact that you filed for office that that kind of generated those signs. So, there's really no recourse the city can do. We certainly can't be weaponized against people that you don't agree with. And if there is a civil issue with this, if there's damages that you can prove, that's a civil issue in court that you would need to bring to Anoka County Court to get settled.
Okay, they are in the right of way, for one. They are actually in the right of way. And there is, the sign ordinance itself says, like rural, residential, commercial, it goes through a whole list of what you can and can't have. The fact that they're in the right of way is a violation all in itself. And they are in the right of way. And I, I mean, I can keep going with the rest of it, but that's.
Do you know how far the right of way is off the center of the street?
Do I know the number?
The distance, yes.
Twenty, I think it's like twenty-two feet. Thirty-three.
And did you measure that?
They're in the right of way.
I know my fence line is thirty-three feet off of the center line of the road, and they are within that thirty-three feet.
Mr. Mayor, if you'd like, we can ask them to move the sign back however many feet into their property. However, we cannot and will not force them to remove those signs.
Okay, so, just so we're clear, then when there's, there's a sign along Baton Street, just spray painted on a cardboard sign that says, "Look is a clown," and it's on a fence, you're not going to send letters or anything. There's nothing that can be done.
There is a freedom of speech guaranteed to them under the U.S. Constitution.
Thank you.
Dino.
Please state your name and where you're. Evening, Dino Profetti, two one zero three four Buchanan Street. My question is, I am curious if council and staff has, with their level of concern, if they have a game plan in retaining Carrie Frost as an employee of the city. I understand she's being interviewed by the city of Lynnwood. Fourteen years' experience with the city, and it could be a big loss. I'm just curious if there's a plan or discussion about that.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, all personnel matters are private. However, we are looking at various different wage scales at this point. We've met with the Personnel Committee, and we are undertaking that study as we speak. As you know, there's a workforce issue everywhere. I'm sure in your business, you're probably experiencing that as well. And so, unfortunately, there's what I refer to as a race to the top, where one city offers this, the next city offers more, and on they go on up. And I think, and I think that's kind of where we're at right now. So, it becomes a difficult situation in that obviously people need to do what's best for them. And, and we are, I've had many conversations with her already, and we're working through that detail, so.
Okay, I'm going to make sure it was known. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dino. Consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented with the addition of item six F.
Ah, you think need to be polled?
Second, and I'd like to pull item A.
I want to pull item E. Just those two? Okay, motion second. All in motion of the consent agenda as amended. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None being heard. Motion passes. Item A.
That's the bills list, and I just have a couple of questions. On one of the pages, there's something called a refund of closing overpay for the water utilities. Can you explain what that means? Refund of closing overpay, there's, for two different organizations or people. But it's not the money that, I just don't, don't know what it means. For water utilities, refund of closing overpay. I don't know when they close on the water utilities, I guess.
Mr. Mayor and Council, this would be a good question for Nate, but I'm assuming that, that it has to do with when you're setting up a, you know, a residential area or a commercial area, you pay a certain amount of escrow down for hooking up your water, and if you paid more than, than is required, we refund that.
Okay. The other one, another question is for conference meetings, there's the same name three times, and I was just wondering if that was a mistake or if this person attended three different classes or if that person's name is the name of a class that three other people went to.
This is for Jeremy Haller?
Yeah.
Yes.
These would be three separate classes and conferences that they attended.
That one person attended.
One person attended, yeah.
And it's for water utilities, or is that what it was for?
I'm sorry, let me take that back. This is for Sutowski, here, I'm not sure how you pronounce his last name, and Haller. So, it's three different people, my apologies, but it went on Jeremy's credit card, so we're reimbursing him.
Oh, okay, that makes perfect sense. And my last question is for vehicle services. I was under the understanding that we have an employee that does the maintenance on all of our vehicles, but yet we're paying Ford and PTL for vehicle services. So, can you kind of go into a little more detail on that?
So, Mr. Mayor and Council, we have an expense on here for three thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars for a front-end differential repair on a Ford vehicle. This kind of exceeds what our mechanics are able to do in terms of size and scope. And, and if it's under warranty or anything like that, we send it in and we cover the difference, so. Well, if, for the little things that they're able to do, we certainly do everything we can in-house for the larger things that, that need a more qualified mechanic, maybe.
Okay. All right, with that, I'll make a motion to approve item A on the consent agenda.
Second. Got a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion passes. Item E.
I just want to express my thanks to these gambling organizations that have contributed ten percent of their earnings to the city. Ham Lake Lions, Coon Rapids Youth Hockey, Andover Huskies, Coon Lake Community Center, and CHOPS. I mean, I know what they go through a lot. When I was on Bethel Fire Department, I was the Relief Association President with gambling. And there's a lot involved to do this, so I do appreciate what they're doing. And the fifty-seven thousand, two thirty-nine, twenty, I'm asking, where does that go, Matt?
Mr. Mayor and Council, that goes directly into our law enforcement account for paying the contract.
Okay, because my thought is like, I'm just thinking aloud here, is like, a lot of our residents are probably contributing, buying bolt tabs and doing all this stuff also. If there's a way that we could do something for the residents for this money, for them to benefit as well, if that's possible.
Well, Mr. Mayor and Council, this would offset, essentially in the budget, what the residents would be paying in taxes for the contract. So, essentially, it offsets the, the contract by the exact amount. So, it essentially benefits, benefits everybody, just not those people directly accruing it, so.
I got that. All right, I'll make a motion to approve item E on the consent agenda.
Got a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None heard. Motion passes. Item eight G.
Mr. Mayor and Council, at the last council meeting, we, our work session, we talked about the East Bethel Facility Access Policy and some of the questions that you, you had on that. We, we made some changes to that. I have included that in the agenda here this evening. And, and it is before you now for approval. One of the questions last time was, does it single out the fire department? And in some instances, it does. And as these policies are somewhat living documents, there may be other facilities that we kind of add in there for specific purposes. Not picking on the fire department, but, but that was one area with specificity that we wanted to identify. And there may be others as well as we, as we grow larger as, as a city, too. But at any rate, the, the policy is before you here this evening for discussion and approval, if you so wish.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the, what's it called, the fire, the safety and security policy.
Second. Got a motion, second. Discussion?
I just have a question regarding the app that people are supposed to not have once they retire or get fired or leave the, are no longer an employee. How are we going to make sure that app is not accessible to them? I think there should be some kind of specific in here, something that specifies what somebody has to do because they could make it look like it's gone and it's still in their drive somewhere. They could, somebody else could send it to them. I don't know if there's some way to secure these apps so that they just can't pop back up. I don't know. I'm not tech.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and, and Council, as I understand it, the, in order to add somebody to the app, you have to submit the telephone number and the type of phone they have to the app administrator. And, and my suggestion is that the fire chief would be responsible for removing people and to, you know, to be in a, you know, to, to work with the new policy essentially and make sure he's following the policy. And then there's also, as part of the app, you can kind of see who the different numbers are that are on there. And, and you can track it that way as well. But yes, the unfortunate reality with Active 911 is there is First Do, which is also another program, and then there is, I keep forgetting the name of it, but it's, it's one that you can track. You can download it yourself, and you'll get just real limited information on, on the callouts. Active 911 gives a little bit more information and sometimes personal information on there. And that's why it's, it's a risk to the city that if personal information is given out when it shouldn't be, then we're liable at that point. And so, we want to make sure that that's not the case, and that's why we want to identify it in a policy, have all managers understand that, and, and then obviously, you know, ask the fire chief to, to monitor that and make sure that, you know, the proper people have it.
I think it was mentioned up here before that with Active 911, the chief or anybody else can go in and remove people off it so that there is control of removing people. So, any person that's on there has to be approved, and then any person that is not allowed to be on there, they can remove them.
And who has access to that list?
The, the fire chief would have access to that list. Pulse Point is the one you can download as an app on your phone. And free, free app, it doesn't give you any of that personal information, and, and is a safe app to use, so.
Yeah, I've seen screenshots of Pulse Point on social media.
On the Active 911 or Pulse Point?
The Pulse Point.
Okay.
Yeah, screenshots.
There was a screenshot of Active 911 that was going around. That kind of press, you know, kind of brought on this, this concern and this potential risk, which is why we wanted to identify it in, as item ten here in the policy for the city.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None heard. Motion passes. Staff report.
Mr. Mayor, I just have a few items to update you on. Good news, Elavage has been hooked up and tested. So, they are, as of tomorrow, fully functioning in terms of the sewer and water. So, that's a, that's a good thing. It was a heavy undertaking to try and get in there during this time of year and, and de-water during this time of year and hook up, and it just fell in the schedule that way. And thankfully, they have succeeded in doing that. As you'll note here in the consent agenda today, we approved item F, which was accepting a resignation to the Planning Commission. As of today, we have two vacancies on the planning. And, and so, if you know of interested parties that are out there that would like to serve their community on the, on the Planning Commission, please have them apply for that. And, and we are, one of the reasons why we brought it forward today as an add-on is because we want to get the names of the candidates before the Planning Commission as soon as possible so they can interview them and bring them to you as council, and you can make that decision then. And we can operate with a full Planning Commission. The next Planning Commission will be a very busy one. Kendra has been very busy and diligent, working and processing through a number of cases. I think there'll be four or five cases coming through at the next Planning Commission. Of course, then that'll come to council after that. And, and then also, we have a new planner starting the first part of this March. So, we're excited to have Grace come onboard and, and start her train-in process and get her accustomed to how we do business here in, in the city of East Bethel. The security system that you've approved is going to be installed on the sixth of March, so that's coming up here quickly. And again, just to remind everyone, that security system is for every building. It's all going to be on the same platform, new cameras, new entry, everything. So, it'll, it'll help to standardize how we, how we allow access to facilities and make sure that, that that's controlled.
Question on that. Will it be installed on all buildings on the sixth? Or will it start at East Bethel and then progress?
Well, I'm not, because that's a good question. I'm not exactly sure how many people they're going to throw at it if, if it'll be quick. I think for some buildings where they don't have to do cut-ins in the doors, that'll.
I think for some buildings where they don't have to do cut-ins in the doors, uh, that'll go quicker. Uh, for others, it may take a little longer. I think there's, there's, uh, locksmiths that have to do the cut-ins as well, so it's assuming that works with their schedule, but my understanding is it starts on the 6th and it should be, should be wrapped up pretty quickly.
Okay, if you can get a schedule on that, can you let council know?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yep. Assignment to that, and if there's any questions, I'll, I'll stand for those.
I do have a question, Matt. I saw, I should have brought it up in the bills. We had a $4,600 bill for the ice arena. I'm curious, can we get a breakdown of how that business is actually running now? Since we've taken it over, the, you know, the plus and negatives, the column and so forth?
Let me just see if I can pull it up here and answer that question, where it's laid out a little differently on here. Uh, $4,600, you said?
Yeah, that was for the gas utilities. But I was just curious as a whole how that is going as a business for the city.
We can, so you're looking at the financials on that?
Correct.
Yeah, we can definitely get you the financials on that and, and, um, and see where we're falling in terms of, I know they're selling a lot of ice time these days, uh, and catching up with some of the expenses that we had before that showed a negative before, but you start to make profit now and, and offset that, so.
Great, thank you.
I can definitely get council an update on that.
Any more questions for Matt? All right, uh, council reports.
I have nothing. I have two items bring up. There was a Highway 65 Coalition Meeting. See, East Bethel did volunteer and was, uh, chosen to be the treasurer again for that organization, and, uh, discussion was had by the various members, and in exchange for East Bethel being the treasurer, they are going to, uh, not charge any member fees.
For what?
Any member fees.
For what organization?
The Highway 65 Coalition.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. So that's a little bit of good news, little cost savings. And then we had a Sunrise River Watershed Management Organization Meeting. Two items with that. Uh, we approved a budget for next year. Um, that will be coming, uh, before the cities here at, uh, at a future time. The new budget total is $50,643 compared to last year's of $47,189. Uh, the second item with the Sunrise River, uh, I believe in about two years, we will have to do the 10-year plan. It's a required item to do by Bowser. And there was discussion of how to fund that. Uh, there's two ways that fees are charged to the cities by the organization. There's operating costs, which is essentially spread even between the cities, 25%. And then there's non-operating costs, uh, which are, it's, it goes by percentage by amount of land that's within each city in the watershed. There's discussion to have the 10-year plan be, uh, done under an operating cost based upon the theory that this is a required item in order for the organization to exist. So, that, uh, will also be coming before the city at a future date. So I just wanted to update everyone on what happened and what to look forward to. So, if there's any.
What's the cost of a 10-year plan?
Uh.
Estimated?
Estimated, we're probably looking at about $50,000.
Really?
Yep.
Wow.
Yep. So.
This would just be an update to the existing plan?
Uh, essentially, yeah, we don't, you don't start from scratch on every plan, but you have to go through all the steps to essentially create a new plan, just like doing a comprehensive plan every 10 years for the city. You have to go through the same steps and, to establish that plan.
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Cause I have a lot. I attended the chamber meeting as, uh, representing the city, and they just, it was a very small group, like three people were there, but we were at NACE, and they did a tour for us, and, um, they served thousands and thousands of people every month. It was pretty amazing that, that small organization could serve so many people. They have a new punch card, um, thing where they, people, so people only come once a month, because we, they serve people, people are coming from Minneapolis and St. Paul and just all over. They drive all the way up here to go to Anoka County's NACE, which really surprised me. But they are really needing diapers, so if people are out there, want to drop off diapers to NACE, or, um, you could drop them off up here in the coatroom, uh, over in the community center over there, cause they are, um, desperate need of diapers. Then, um, and as it was part of the chamber meeting, I have a question. Does the city pay for the council members to be members of the chamber, or are we just automatically members? Are, uh, we just get to automatically attend? I, I had always paid, but I just don't know how that works now, cause I didn't pay.
Mr. Mayor, I don't recall seeing it on the budget, but we can look.
Okay.
And see if that's a part of it.
Maybe.
I don't think I've ever paid anything when I've attended them meetings.
I know, but maybe the city had for all city employees. I don't know. I don't know if, how that works.
I can inform everyone on that, yep.
Okay, thanks.
I, I think the council's always just been invited, then not necessarily a member of.
Right.
Okay. Then I attended the airport meeting, um, the Blaine, I know, Anoka County Blaine Airport. And, um, the city, Blaine City Administrator spoke, and they are demolishing buildings on 105th and Madison or Lexington, that area. Uh, they're planning on putting in a huge, um, sports center, and it's going to be a 5K person attending stadium for baseball. They're gonna have their own, a brand-new league of baseball, less than the Saints, but more than the East Bethel Bandits, so somewhere in between there. And they, the, see, the name of the team is a big secret for some reason. Uh, but there, it's gonna be a multi-use. They're gonna use it for concerts and other things. They're going to have hotels, restaurants, pickleball courts, mini-golf, and all kinds of other entertainment, trying to diminish traffic problems from what a stadium will cause. The airport is getting a, um, new above-ground fuel tank, hundreds of thousands of dollars. Oh, my computer trying to die on me. Let's see, what else they do. They started a, something that they called a fly neighborly procedure. Pilots can opt in to comply, however, most of them already do comply. There was, um, I feel like I'm missing something. A representative from Holiday Tree of Hope, they spoke. They acquired donated toys and gifts for children in the hospital. And if anybody would like more information on that, it's holidaytreeofhope.org. June 28th, the Young Eagles are having a pancake breakfast there in the morning. This is an amazing program to introduce young people to flying careers. Pilots donate their time and fuel to take kids up in the air. Homeschoolers and private and homeschools have taken advantage of learning about the flying at this airport. And, uh, you can go to, um, what's the website? EEA.org, I think. And, uh, the airport is starting to do a 20-year comp plan, and they're looking for public engagement. So if there's people out there who are interested in being part of an airport comp plan, you can let me know and I'll give your name to the right people. And for those of you who are curious about, I've always seen social media posts about what's, why are there so many helicopters here? Why is that airplane flying so low? You can go to macnomes.com, M-A-C-N-O-M-S dot com. And that has all the flight information. If you have a complaint or a question, there's a form you can fill out and it'll, you'll get an answer. And there's, um, if you go to M A, MSP MAC, that is the whole airport, Blaine Airport and all the airports website. And if you have any questions, want to read minutes or anything like that, that's there. Okay, that's what I've done. Now I have some question. When I first started city council, I was told there was going to be, um, an emergency plan and other modifications made from the fire department, and I was wondering if we're going to be seeing that and approving it, or if it's just already a policy that's in place?
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Council, the emergency plan is being worked on as we speak. The county is needing to finalize theirs first, and then the city finalizes theirs after that. That is a, um, top priority right now, so you will, you will see that plan when it's, uh, when it's finished.
Okay. And I did have a landform question, but I think you answered that by saying the Planning Commission's going to be really busy. So, another issue, some of these, um, people have called me, and so I have to ask these questions too. Uh, a lot of residents, um, claim that they've been taken to court or have court ordinance violations, and the city is going to take them to court, and I'm just wondering if there are any current cases, and if there are, is there not a policy that they're supposed to come to the, through the city council and a work meeting or something that we discuss? So, do we have any residents that are currently, um, fined or have court cases pending, or some that are going to come before us?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Council, the current, uh, the cases that are currently being worked on right now, um, are, were approved by the prior council, and the new policy going forward is before they are prosecuted, the council has to be made aware of it and vote on that. So, uh, no new cases have come through since this, this new council has taken, taken the seat, so.
Good to know. I also attended a, always attend the seniors' meeting, and, um, they meet every third Thursday, by the way, out there, and they're always looking for anyone 55 over to come in, sit, get involved. In March, they have their elections coming up. However, they did ask me to come back and ask if they could get a copy of the cleaning contract, and they would like to know when the contract renewal date is. Cause I forgot to ask you that when I spoke to you. And then I have another thing regarding the issue we had with the missing, the key that was missing, and they had to send some, somebody up to open that door. I think we should have a policy in place for if something happens like that, where they're, they either are responsible to go back to their house and get it, or if we're gonna pay city staff to go get it, the, the organization has to reimburse us, something like that. Because I thought about it after what you told, you described, and I'm like, that's too much, that costs the city, too much money for that situation, and it's not right. It's not right that people had to pay, out there had to pay for something, somebody else's mistake.
So, Mr. Mayor and Council, just, just an update on that. When this new security system is installed, we will be able to, from the cell phone, give them access instantly.
Oh, good.
So, there will not be this need any further. Unfortunately, it was the last and most painful, uh, exercise in doing that. So, um, thankfully, the new systems give us that flexibility.
Okay, thank you, and that's all I have, so I'm done.
What time are the senior meetings?
10:30, third Thursday.
Okay, I was, uh, at the League of Minnesota Cities, uh, Newly Elected Officials Conference this past weekend, and, uh, there was a lot of good, good information, a lot of guidance. A lot of people attended it. It was very informational, and they're, uh, they got a, another one, I think it's getting announced tomorrow. There's a webinar coming up on social media issues, that I think a lot of us should look at. It's supposed to be a brand-new deal they've just put together about social media, and it's supposed to be mid-March, but I think they're announcing it tomorrow, so. That's all I have.
Make motion adjourned.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None heard. Meeting's adjourned.